To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, individual ability, and justice.
Okay. All, we're all present except for Emory who's online at home. Emory, how are you doing in terms of voting tonight?
Yeah.
Emory, you have to say again.
Am I here? Yep. I'm, uh, I'm actually on some pain meds and I'm not supposed to buy a car and I probably shouldn't be driving. So I thought voting might be a little irresponsible.
Okay, duly noted. Alright, so Emory will be participating in conversation, but we will not be paying any attention to his opinions.
Get that in a minute.
I, I told him earlier, as long as he wasn't seeing pink elephants, maybe would be okay. Alright, moving along, any conflicts of interest?
I'm gonna abstain from voting through the appointment of the ordinance meeting because my wife is on the list.
Yep, which is a pretty obvious one.
I have the same, that I'm on that list though.
That's even more odd. Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Still have enough folks keeping them without our phones at home.
Yes, that's right. That's why there's seven of us and not three. Okay. Have anything on the consent agenda? Treasurers warrants, we want to hear a motion.
We'll approve the consent agenda. Okay.
Discussion? All in favor? Excellent. Attention to Emory. Next, a couple of minutes from the last meeting. Have a motion?
We'll approve the minutes of the last meeting. Second.
Any corrections, Tom?
Hang on just a minute, I wrote myself some notes out. Oh, I just thought that the, um, this, within Sue McDaniel's presentation about helping hands with parks, there was a, I made a point about how the lack of, um, benefits, SNAP benefits, uh, you know, benefits and such, would, um, create more applications for general assistance and Julie spoke to that a little bit, how that town was already seeing more applications. So I just thought it would be helpful to include that in the minutes as well. You know, and FYI that we're already needing more need.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? I'm not gonna vote on this just because I put me fear, so. Alright, all in favor? So I'm just standing for that. But claim deeds, there's nothing, board of assessors. We have tax abatements, um, we can talk about those, but if I have a motion to pass that?
We'll approve the various nonprofit buildings, town-owned properties, um, because of an error.
Okay, have a second?
No second.
This is our opportunity, was any discussion had at our last meeting about this or is this the first time for everybody to hear about this? It was the publicized meeting, whoa.
It was the stuff not in detail.
Okay.
Just in the works, something will be proposed at this meeting.
Okay.
So here we are.
Fantastic. Uh, Alcina, anything else you wanna add?
Uh, nope, just basically that the consolidated, I consolidated the list of all the, um, properties that did have the errors and that's what you all have impacted there.
Okay.
And the figures remain the same as what I reported out last week.
Excellent, alright.
Yeah, and also that we reviewed these at the administrative committee meeting last week, so, um, I, I think there's an understanding of what happened and unfortunately we all make them.
Excellent. Alright, do I have a vote?
Any question?
Oh, yes, sir.
What are we doing to make sure this doesn't happen?
Hmm.
Well.
Mistakes happen, but our job is to make sure they're checked and balanced. I'm guessing what have we put in place to try to rectify that in future?
We don't think anything, this specific issue, looking at the broader picture of, you know, if individuals are deciding to retire and/or what is the latest in assessing, what do we as a town want to do? In that as far as.
Yeah, that's as far as we got. We, we have, uh, even before I left, we did discuss about trying to come up, once we get our assessing sorted out, come up with, based on whatever that is, come up with a procedure for, right before the commitment to double check the, the high points. So, nothing yet, but we, before next year, we'll definitely have something in place.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Alright, all in favor? Excellent, thank you. Next, we have the statement for the South Street Development Court. Something? Do I have a motion on that?
We want to approve the South Street Development abatements.
Second.
Any discussion about that?
I think that too was a billing error, correct? There was some misunderstanding about who actually owned that property with the house that was wanted. 137.
Okay. Uh, all in favor? Thank you. Alright, moving along, open session. Have any public case, no? Okay, then that means open session for the public.
Hi, Nissamatullah, 11 Mayo Street, Dover Foxcroft. I wanna talk about the property across the street from us. 8 Mayo Street has been an absolute threat to our whole neighborhood. There are rats, there are rodents, they have built a wonderful habitat for these animals to live. There have trees that have been, have been cut down, there are logs laying, grass. If anything ever sparked a fire, that whole yard and all the semi-dead pine trees would all go up in flames. We have been asking for five years to get this fixed and nothing has happened.
Yep, um. Nan, can you speak to that?
Those probably work for the owner. Um, the trees that were taken down, were taken by, down by the town, I believe, and just dropped and left there.
He was told he had to pick them up.
Okay, and I tried to ask him to pick them up. Um, he doesn't live locally, another one of those houses that somebody bought and I'm gonna assume was gonna do something with it and then didn't. Um, but I'm still trying to get him to come up. He has come up and secured the door, but the garage door looks worse now than it did before and I think there was glass in the garage door when you and I looked. There's no glass in the garage door now. Um, and I can't tell about rats, cause it's all locked up, I can't get in. And I don't see them outside, but I'm not going to, I mean, they're not gonna be around when you pull in the driveway, they're gonna be hiding wherever they wanna be. So I'm not doubting that they're there, that's not what I mean.
You have other complaints from other neighbors, so.
Yes, I just don't, I'm not doubting that they're there, I don't want you to think that I'm saying that. I'm not sure where to go if he doesn't respond, other than dangerous building. And then we've got one more building that we're gonna have to deal with and.
Okay, so, yeah, and.
Go ahead. Sorry.
May I be?
It's my impression, and I could be very wrong about this, uh, that he lives in Corinna.
He's moved from there now.
Okay.
He's some, I've got his address, um, not with me, but I do have an address for him. I have spoken to him. Um, but I haven't had, I'm trying to do it by, in writing, so that I have a record of what I've sent and.
Thank you.
Well, that way it's not a, I, you told me this, I told you that, there's something in writing.
Um, there's a, like a sun porch in the back of the building that has had a top on the roof for many, many years. Now that's half off, I suspect that little room is not in very good shape.
Yeah.
That, the door is opened, I think it's just an exterior door, but that's been open for years. The back of the garage door has been open and shut by the wind. Um, and the roof is starting to separate, I don't know what part you call that.
Collapsing on the corner of the, of the barn and garage.
It where it, it joins, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we had to stop feeding the birds, cause we had rats from over there. So they are there.
Yeah, oh, the, when you, pretty much, you're near enough the river that anything that's, um.
Never had them till this year.
Yeah, anything that looks habitable to them.
And the garage house, I said to him in the, in the last letter, the garage has a stack of mattresses in it, or I don't know how deep it is, but I can see mattresses at this height. And I don't know if it's mattresses from the floor up, or if the mattresses are stacked on something, but great habitat.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, one of my neighbors said she'd seen people going in there. And she has a better view than we do. And she said, I saw her enough in the garage, I don't wanna see anymore. So it's a mess.
Good, does she know who the, not the owner?
No, no.
Interesting.
Uh, Jane?
Question, so in your written correspondence, do you give a deadline?
Yes, um, he's supposed to hear, respond to me by the end of this week, in the last letter. And if he doesn't respond to me, I will bring it to you folks, or write him another letter and say, come before the select board at your next meeting.
Yep, that sounds appropriate. And we have, it's been, it's been a while since the building's been brought to our attention, but this is certainly not the first time that I remember hearing about it. So, um, thank you, and thank you, Nan.
Any other questions for me?
No. Alright, anything else from the public?
Van Stewart, Director of Scotty Basaria Community Center. Um, just an update, again, um, the pool is, once again, on hold. We were hoping to start painting this week, but we still are waiting for more epoxy to fill more holes, because there were more little holes than we thought. And on the initial paint order that we had done, the company that we ordered the paint through had done the math on it, we didn't double check. And so we have a little more than half of the paint that we need, so we're looking at another $7,000-ish for more paint. Um, we do still have that in the budget, as long as nothing else goes horribly awry, so we are continuing to work on it. As the epoxy gets there, we'll keep going there. But while it's on hold, we did start the final siding project on Sunday last week. So if you drive by, the, it's got really fancy bright green house wrap on it, which looks very nice. But the whole front is stripped and, um, they're putting up the metal, event metal this morning, teregora windows, so all that stuff's ready. Um, the massage lady has officially signed her lease of may, so she's gonna be coming into where the staff kitchen used to be, so we'll have a massage therapist. And then this Friday, I think, uh, everybody, we've heard about, it's pretty exciting, we're doing hide and seek from the police. So, it's a community event, they just put it up today on their page, they're getting really positive, like, say the thing. And we've got about thirty people signed up right now. If it does rain, we're just gonna put all the stuff we have inside out, so people can hide and seek inside. Um, but rain or shine, we're gonna do it. And if you bring donuts, you get a ten-second head start from everybody else. So, it should be very fun, um, just after Halloween, after everybody's on trick-or-treating, give people something to do that's not running around town. Um, our program director just started to put together something, and I want to bring up for you two, they wanna do pack the halls lights competition, um, and invite all Dover Foxcroft to do, like, house lighting, and then we can put together a tour, so people can drive it and look at them. He's done it before in other, other areas and he loves decorating, so he's very excited about it. Um, so I didn't know if there was anything here, and I kinda do all the business stuff here, but I don't wanna duplicate efforts if we can collaborate instead.
Anybody, I don't think anybody's doing anything organized.
Okay, alright, so we're planning to do that, so I think that'll be really fun. Um, we did set up a little food pantry in the entryway, especially with all the SNAP benefits not existing for the next, at least month, and Thanksgiving coming, and it's just a really poor time of year for that to happen to people. So, it's just small, but if anybody wants to bring something or take something, it's right there in our entryway. Um, please feel free to stop by and do either. And we got brand new fancy pens. We got the imprint five, uh, imprint, four imprint grant for $500, so we got some fancy swag. I brought some for everybody on the back table. Um, that's all we've got, we're doing lots and lots of cleaning and painting and fixing and. Yeah.
Excellent, yeah. Well, I'm, I'm pleased that you're, I know it's frustrating to not get pools situated, but way better to get all the details right now before you put whatever, forty thousand gallons or whatever the water, how mu- how many?
Hundred thousand.
Yeah. Sorry, my, my new pool was like thirty thousand, yeah, okay.
And that's, and honestly, that's what we're trying to do, is every time we run into a snag, we're just trying to address it and do it right, and it's been more expensive than we anticipated, but if we continue what we're doing, nobody should have to touch it for ten years. And when they do, it should be drain it, wash it, paint it.
Yeah.
So, that's the goal.
Excellent, thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Any questions? Anybody else? Anybody online? No? Alright, let's close open session for the public and open session for the board.
Okay, um, a couple of things, one is, um, kudos to Tammy and Tara for reinstating Eastern Area Agency on Aging in town. Um, their opening of their office was today, and that's just a long time coming, and I'm really, really happy that they made that happen. Um, I have a cou- a couple of questions, one is, I heard on the radio today that absentee voting has been really busy statewide, and I wondered about here.
Pretty busy.
Pretty busy.
Yeah. I mean, none of the cities, it was, I have to remember, but, 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 busier than I would've thought of being, being just a small election. We're probably dead and.
Right, right, we're in between the big ones, so.
Thank you, and then, um, uh, one of the people who's interested in Eastover Cemetery possibly being renamed to Eastover Dow Cemetery, or whatever's been discussed, I just wondered about any updates about that.
Uh, there isn't necessarily, I think there's still question as the, there's an annex section of it, and so there's actually like three parts that make up that cemetery. I'm still trying to do a little bit of research as far as, um, where it actually ends and starts type of thing. Really thing I'm finding is, it's always been called Eastover, um, but, um, I know there's an annex section that was donated by the Dows. Cool. Kevin might actually be able to, cause have you surveyed that cemetery?
I have not surveyed that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I worked on one.
Alright, thought maybe you'd have it, so I know.
I don't, I don't.
More to come? Yes. Thank you.
Anybody else? Alright, close open session for the board, and are there any adjustments to the? No, that's good. Um, do we have any committee report? Oh, yes, we do, we have an admin committee report.
Yeah, um, a lot on our list, we talked about the abatements that we just took action on, this was on the twenty-first we met. Um, we talked about our assessment situation, discussed the assistant town manager, um, job description. Um, discussed the advisory board for the planning grant for, uh, the recreational, tell me what it is, just work, I know it's work, like. Recreation.
Recreational economy for rural communities.
Good job.
Okay.
Got it, Brandon. So we, um, had just enough people volunteer for that, correct? Nine people?
Yes, I actually, um, so I reached out and actually got some more applications just recently, that kinda snuck in under the wire, uh, last week.
Okay.
Actually, a little bit more.
Okay, so we will discuss that the next time we meet.
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, and we are finalizing the code of ethics language and aware that we need a code of ethics, um, statement or document for the employee handbook, so that's forthcoming. Um, we worked on the ordinance committee, populating the ordinance committee, and we're gonna talk about that in a little bit. Um, I think that's what we accomplished, our next meeting is November sixth.
Excellent. Great, so, I'm unfinished business, we have phone enforcement.
About dates, um, I went to 130 Grove Street and it's locked, I can't get in unless I take a grow bar. And so I will contact the attorney and see where we go from here, because I think that would be the best plan, is to get his advice. Um, and then on twenty-nine, or twenty-nine, nineteen days, the one, the one you had complained, um, or you had concerns about Joel, twenty-nine, um, I sent out two letters, they both come back with, the first one with a new address. So I sent it to the new address and I came back. I've done a true people search for both names of the owners and got a variety of addresses, several of which are, most of which we have already sent letters to. Um, these are the same addresses that the town office has and we're probably gonna end up owning this for taxes, so.
Oh, how close are we?
Um, they, uh, they haven't paid last year's taxes and then we can't get them this year's taxes, or last year's taxes. The notice even, because they keep moving.
Beginning of the new, the new year, we'll get the two-year window.
Yeah.
December, right? Right, and then we've gotta do the, try once again to let them know. Yeah, okay, so, uh, this will, looks like it's gonna be resolved.
We are working on it.
Yeah, yeah, resolved one way.
Successful if we would like. Um, and then at the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about Shore Road South. And Thursday, um, the state site evaluator and state plumbing inspector is coming up and meeting with Alcina and I and the local plumbing inspector, and we're gonna have a meeting, and then we're going out to the property. And they'll have, they're not hooked up to the septic.
Right.
Um, and my understanding is they have no intention of hooking up to it at this point in time. Um, so um, what I've been told is that the state inspector will give them X many days to get hooked up, and if they don't, it'll be up to the town to evict them from their property.
Reminder, is there even a leach field in septic on site? Yeah.
There, there's something on site, but I don't know if it's even
Sterilizing.
Valid at this point.
They do have leach field, right?
Yeah, you know approximately what the age is and?
I don't, I only know that from doing some work down there.
Got it, okay, just.
I do know there's a leach field there, I don't know how old it is or anything.
Right. So, in theory, there's something for them to hook up to.
Yes. It's just gonna be relatively expensive, so, cause it's on the opposite side of the home from where the camper is, and. Bravo.
Okay, well, thank you, we'll get an update. Yep.
Great. Um, so this meeting that's gonna happen this Thursday, I thought there was going to be someone coming from one of the state offices last week.
He's, he, um, he was sick and couldn't come, so we got postponed.
Okay.
Um, and he's, uh, it's Brent Lawson.
He's coming this weekend.
He's coming this week.
Okay, great, and, um, who's our help officer? Brian.
Yeah, for now.
And so.
Nan takes it over.
What, um, what triggers a response from you in a situation like this?
I mean, we had an agreement with them three months ago, that the issue taken care of. Both, bro. Yeah, you've rolled that, and there was a quartet out there that they used for years, that got taken away, um, you know, we got no complaints from the neighbors, the kids were already cleaned, bad, there was no other complaints. Until recently, they really ramped up because of other issues in that area. Um, but it's just been years after years after years of false promises, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, we're gonna take care of this, we have that solution, we do this, and then unfortunately, here we are with Nan, to the, to the last big bang of it. So.
And just, do the kids go to school?
That, I'm not a hundred percent sure, that is a great question, I don't know. You know?
I don't know.
I, I honestly do not know the answer to that.
And I don't know the ages, I think one is thirteen, freshman maybe, and I don't know, there's a younger one or two, and I don't know if they're middle school or younger. I, I've never seen the kids there, so I don't know their ages.
Okay.
So my question is, is this update, the communication that the group, the AKA, um, association will be receiving? Or will they get a formal email or something to let them know?
Oh, they're still in touch, I told them.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they know we're, no, it's fine, they know we're coming out on Thursday.
Okay.
And this is also a separate matter from the road, so it's not, it's not a promoting type of thing, it's just completely separate from that.
Right, but I think there was mention of the smell, which I think impacts.
When the port.
Why they're coming.
When, um, bosses comes and cleans out the odor fingers.
Yep. Hey. No, any more questions? Thanks, Nan. Alright, so, uh, moving on to admin warrant. Mobile cell phone power.
Let's move to produce, admin warrant number twelve, will be mobile phone question there.
Second.
On the session? Yeah.
I'm just curious, how hopeless that, what did you learn?
Yeah, so exactly what I was thinking, um, Joe wanted to keep his number, so when he retired, he figured it out, Timo wouldn't realize that we weren't gonna continue to use that phone, so we were charged that amount, and so they're rectifying that, and we're actually getting a refund.
Okay. Thank you, speaking of, still on the website as animal people officer. Yes, on that, did I?
Yes.
Okay, um, any more questions? Alright, all in favor? Thank you. Alright. New business, AO mill dam removal update. Turn that over to you, Alcina.
Well, we have Eileen Bader Hall and John Beatty. Eileen's from TNC and then John is from ASF, and they're in the Samson Federation, Beach Conservancy, probably, not everybody knows the acronyms, and they have a presentation for you folks, and we're gonna share.
Put the lights off for this?
Yeah.
Great, thank you, Alcina. Uh, as Alcina said, I'm Eileen Bader Hall, freshwater restoration manager with the nature conservancy. Um, and I'm here tonight with my colleague, John Beatty. Please introduce yourself, John.
Yeah, uh, my name's John Beatty, I'm with the Atlantic Dam Federation, I'm a project manager and co-managing this project, will that be?
We're here tonight just to give an update on the progress so far for the AO mill dam removal project. So, Alcina, if you wanna go to the next slide.
I think I could, watch that.
It's a little slow. And so, just a little bit of background context, which I think most of you know, but TNC and ASF have been working, we're working with the town originally a few years ago on a feasibility and alternative study to think about, um, what the options were for proceeding with the dam. There was a dam committee that went through that process for a little over a year, then there was the vote in June twenty twenty-four, and the town had voted at that time to keep the dam, uh, and so ASF and TNC sort of, uh, took a backseat while the second iteration of the dam committee then evolved. Took a backseat while the second iteration of the dam committee then evaluated the options of how to go about keeping the dam. We had said that, you know, if the town at any point wanted to consider dam removal in the future, that we absolutely were still committed. To supporting that, to supporting that project. And so there was the second iteration of the dam committee, and then another vote this past June. And the town voted, as you know, to remove the dam. And so that brings us all the way to here today. TNC and ASF are. Are fully committed to this project, providing project management and covering the full cost of the project all the way through implementation. And I was just to also say that the Biscatius River is a major priority for TNC and for ASF because of just the incredible amount of habitat. That's available for endangered Atlantic salmon and other sea run fish species and end native fish as well. So. It has been and remains a very high priority for our organization. So since the vote in June. We worked closely with the town on putting together a three-party agreement between TNC, ASF. And the town detailing kind of our commitment and our roles and responsibilities for the project moving forward. And that agreement was approved at the, I believe it was the August select board meeting. And then we started to move forward as quickly as possible with some of the survey work that we knew needed to be done during the field season so that we wouldn't lose time. With having to wait for next field season. And so we quickly, we knew that we would need to have a muscle survey done. That's a requirement from inland fisheries and wildlife. So that muscle survey has been completed and we should be getting the final report soon. We also knew that we would need a wetlands delineation. That's a critical part of the permitting with the US Army Corps of Engineers. And so that wetland delineation happened this summer. We have contracted with Interflue, which is the firm that's going to be doing the engineering and design work. They're also the firm that did the feasibility and alternative studies, so they're very familiar with the site. They have some data for the site, although they needed this, and this is being collected right now. Has been, will continue. They're doing much more detailed topographic assessment, best metric, collecting best metric data. And then there was some sediment sampling done previously, and they're doing more of that sampling to check on the sediment behind the dam. And that just allows us to know both quantity of how much will need to be removed, and then also to understand. If there's any concerns with any of the sediment, which didn't show up in the last round of sampling, but if there were, that would just help us plan with where that sediment has to go. And where it can be disposed of. And then we've been working very closely with Elsina on reaching out to all of the state federal agencies to start the consultation process to. Get the permitting process underway. So we've done all those kickoff meetings, and then we're sending out the formal consultation letters now so that we have formal. Responses on the record, and that's an important part of, a big piece of all of this, which is putting together the surrender application to FERC. And so we anticipate that the FERC surrender application will be ready to submit likely this spring, once we're very close to like the one hundred percent design plans. And then next slide, John.
Yeah, so we'll do the estimated timeline here. So as I mentioned, Interflue was out here today, I think, and. Possibly another day, but we're completing fieldwork this month. And all that fieldwork and all that data that they collect is gonna go into their different design iterations. And so we get sixty percent, which is the first one, we'll see a ninety, and then eventually a hundred. Between each iteration of the design, that design goes out to different agencies, to the town and Elsina. And federal, local agencies will take a look and they'll comment on that. We'll take. All those comments and the engineers will incorporate those into the next design, and we'll go through the projects again until we get to a hundred. So that sixty percent will come in December, and then we'll get a ninety in March. Once we have the ninety percent in hand, we'll have pretty much all the information we need, and Eileen and I and Elsina have been working together on that. Application at that point and written most of it, so that we'll be ready to file the surrender application, and we will. And that initiates the FERC review. FERC is the Federal Energy and Regulatory Commission, and that's the federal oversight on. The dam, since it was once used for hydro power. And so because the town holds. Holds a permit from FERC, we have to surrender that permit in order to proceed with the dam removal. And so Eileen and I met with FERC, and they let us know that it'd probably be eighteen to twenty-four months, so a pretty long turnaround there. But fortunately for us, that gives us plenty of time to work on a lot of those permits that Eileen mentioned, so the Army Corps, no rise permits. And working with main DEP as well, and other agencies that would work with the historic preservation office as well to make sure that. The historic aspects of the dam and the powerhouse are being preserved. And so once permitting is completed, and we have various ongoing there, but it. Will be completed in twenty twenty seven. Typically, how these kind of river projects go is the year before construction. We have everything in hand, the permits, the hundred percent design, everyone's approved of it, and we can put the project out to bid. The town would select the contractor for that. And then we have this very tiny window, about a month in August. Around, you know, middle of the summer every year when the fish aren't really moving around very much. Where we're allowed to work in the river, and that's under federal law that we have to follow that. So looking at construction. In twenty twenty eight, we feel really good about this time. I'm really confident, confident, but of course, you never know, things can change. We might have to shift timelines around, but we're pretty hopeful for twenty twenty eight. Ready for that, so. So I'm gonna talk now about the scope of work. I mean, mentioned a few of these things, but. Of course, we're gonna have dam removal, so removing the entire structure of the dam, right down to the bedrock, including the gatehouse and the powerhouse as well. And speaking of the powerhouse, we know there's some asbestos in there, I believe in the roofing and insulation, so. We're, we've started a site assessment on that to. Try to figure out and learn more about the extent of asbestos and what we can do with it, where to dispose of it, and how to go about that. Then we have retrofits to walls and buildings, so the walls are referring to. The walls along the river, you know, kind of under the bridge. And then the building is, you know, the mill building and. Making sure that basically when the dam does come down, the water is flowing through at different. Water levels that the foundations of the walls and buildings are all safe and ready to go. Then I mean, touched on this, but we have sediment removal and disposal, so we're. Doing some more sample and analysis to see. If there's anything in the sediment that we don't want washing downstream, in which case. That sediment will be removed and relocated to an in-state facility. Yeah, and then I don't know if you can see it when the water is low, but. Before Mayo Mill Dam and how it currently looks, there was a timber crib dam there that still exists underwater. And it's pretty amazing how well those structures stay intact over time underwater. The, the water actually preserves them, so there's a lot of work. To get those out. Then we have some in-stream work right in the channel, at the dam and a little below and along the banks. And again, this is kind of similar to the. Building retrofits, and that's making sure that everything's stable and ready for the dams to come down and the water to move through. So some things they do is adding boulders and actually they'll take these boulders, you know, bury them, and just a little bit will be sticking up and. Do some enhancements to the river to ensure that there's flow throughout the year for fish to move through. And then finally, we have upland site enhancement, so that's. Basically, everything up out of the river. I know there were some renderings. That were done a couple of years ago as part of the feet building report, but. Clearly, this is an area that we're gonna be looking for folks in town to speak up and let us know what you want to see, what you don't want to see, things you want to preserve. Things like that, and we're working with Elsina, trying to figure out the best venue for that. Could be a town meeting, could be an online portal that you can submit comments, you know, maybe a combination of both of those. But yeah, that's generally the major area to explore. So the next one's the last slide, and this is kind of just a visual representation of the scope of work, particularly around the dam itself, to give another. Kind of sense of what's gonna be going on with the dam removal. So kind of similar to the scope of work, we have bank stabilization in this blue area along each side, and then there's some. Labeling of retrofitting the walls and, and some of the foundations. Obviously, this is the old dam, the fish ladder, the old gate structure, the powerhouse. That's all gonna come down. Right to the bedrock, except for, you can see the blue kind of overlaps there. It's kind of hard to see, but. Again, this is only from the feasibility report, so this isn't the final design. When we have design. The sixty percent will be sharing that with Elsina, and we'll work out how to make sure that we have an opportunity for, for the public to, to chime in on, on claims as well. So that's kind of the big overview of everything that we've done so far and what we're thinking the future might look like. I think if it's okay with the board, we can take some questions too from whoever, if there are any.
Sure. And Blue Dust.
You refer to the design. Can you explain what you mean by the design?
Yeah, so they'll be, our engineering firm, Interflue. Is gonna be working on. A big plan for everything to do with dam removal. That's. Where to stage the excavators, how the, the sequence of events of how everything's gonna work, what they'll run. They'll basically this graphometric survey, which is like underwater topographic map of the river. They'll put that into a computer and put different flows through and see where the water will go and what, you know, what will happen. With different ways that they could structure this area too. So basically, taking all that data and designing. How to go about removing the dam, and then how to. Basically, kind of retrofit the river itself to handle water, to make sure it stays in place, to make sure flooding is. You know, reduced over on, I think it's East Main Street, and. There's a lot of, you know, if you want to add.
It's essentially blueprints that can be handed over to the construction company, so they know exactly how to go about. Starting the project, where to start, and how they're, how they're going through that course of events in terms of actually. Like keeping the water out of the site so that they can get in with the excavators and then be taking out the material.
Basically, a, a plan from start to finish, yeah.
Not just randomly going in with a shovel.
Yeah, different, yeah, parts, exactly.
So I, I assume from this that the channel going under the bridge will be affected. So the bridge work, that bridge is due for replacement, doesn't start until after twenty twenty eight.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. And so Interflue has already actually been in touch with. E O C on that, and so they're working very closely together and in fact, sharing data. Because some of the data that Interflue is collecting, since this is a little bit ahead of their schedule, some of this data will be useful to them. But they're working closely together to make sure that those are in sync and that the removal. Ares with the, what's gonna happen with the bridge.
Sure, we're all hoping that the bridge stays up.
And the Essex Street Bridge as well, they're coordinating efforts down there as well.
Yeah. Which will be going on roughly at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, I mean, why have all of our major infrastructure projects spaced out? Have them all happen at once? Yeah. Any other questions from the board? Jay first?
Well, you used the term timber crib?
Yeah, that's a, basically, it's what they call. The structure that the dam used to be made of. So it used to be a wooden dam. And so the, the bit foundation of that still exists, I think, upstream of.
In some of the, I'm trying to think of, in some of the historical photos, you can sort of, you can see it, which we could share with you, and it's super low water conditions. You can see a little bit of it as well. It's just like the old remnant structure.
Like in logs with rocks.
Yeah, yes.
Big log, yeah.
So will that be salvaged, and can we auction it off to reduce taxes?
Actually, so. I was actually just thinking, if we can salvage a lot of it, it actually has a high price for people to do woodworking. And if it was something we could sell, that's something going to do a fund on interest and get a quarterly back on recreational stuff.
Yeah.
Is that our decision or yours?
That's something we'd love to include, and that's, you know, where we'd love to get feedback like that. That makes the project better.
I think it just depends how they can pull it, like if they can preserve it when they're pulling it out, but that's really interesting.
Then we can bring it up to them in there, for sure.
Save the timber crib.
You know, on the plant side, the crib works.
Yeah.
It's a well-known whitewater. Part of, you know, going down the farm, starting rafting or whatever.
Yeah, if you're, if you're up at Howland before the water comes back up, it's so low up there that you can see it up there as well.
Yeah, there's still some in the Kennebec on the north side of the highway, not for the dam, if they were there for. Probably having something to do with the. Log flows, but you can see that there are these square.
Boom log chains.
Yeah. Yeah, but those have been there for a hundred years at least. Hey Jake, did you have something else?
The initial concept plans, the drawings, are they pretty much the same, or will they change, or?
Yeah, those concept drawings, at least the ones of the upland, like the parks and stuff. I would say that those aren't, I, I don't know, maybe we should take those out of here, because I think we'll probably redo them.
Is that what you mean, the landscaping? The landscape, do you mean the landscape conceptual plans or the, the construction plans?
No, like the drawings on the fall.
The landscape.
High level conceptual, and so those are certainly, those were just ideas that got out on paper, so to give people an idea of. Visualizing what could be, but those are not, those are not final plans.
They fifty percent right, seventy-five.
I think he's more or less, are, are you talking about the water levels?
Yeah, the flow where, where the rivers.
Yes, I, I think, I mean, there's gonna be more specificity now, but I mean, those are, those are pretty accurate, and then we'll have even more. Like more detail in terms of what we anticipate the water levels will be at any given location at different times of the year, so like. At a spring flow versus the end of August flow, but they will, yes, be very similar to what. Share previously.
Yep. Okay. Anything else?
Just thank you for being here tonight. I thought you might be on Zoom, so it's really nice that you made the effort to come. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, Dan's gonna get the lights back on. And maybe the next time you come to make a presentation, we'll actually have. Better.
Better light.
Better space for, it's, it's on the to-do list. Okay, all right, thank you again. All right, let's move on to the second ambulance purchase. By the way, we won't be offended if you guys need to get on the road. I will turn it over to you.
Was everybody able to have time to review the packets that went over the weekend that I sent? So I sent some packets out. With the select board packets, kind of explaining why this was kind of a crucial need to us. Banking information and financial information, what we're looking at for cost. The reason we're looking at a second doc so quick was when we first started this plan. Three years ago, our whole role in this EMS service was just gonna be as a backup to Northern Light. So as we went through our abundant stuff, we decided that at the time. One truck probably would be sufficient, because our estimated calls could be around sixty to a hundred calls per year. After the truck was purchased and through the whole transition of this EMS service that we've started that. Northern Light has turned over primary coverage to the dual far shock fire department. While we're staff Monday through, well, seven days a week now, eight to four, so just in the last couple of months, we've run a hundred and sixty-five medical calls. That doesn't include the fire responses that the ambulance responds on. And Elsana and I also said in a meeting probably a month and a half ago, and Northern Light's going to work for us to up our eight hour coverage to twelve hours of coverage next year. So that's increased call volume. Out of those hundred and sixty five runs we've just done in the last few months, seven of which is simultaneously calls occurring, which mean we're having back to back calls come in that we can't handle because we don't have a second truck. Northern Light was able to help some of them, but they're not able to help on all of them because they're still out doing transfers for emergency runs. The the biggest issue we're having right now is increased mileage, maintenance breakdowns. We don't have a backup plan. Like while I was gone on vacation, I'll tell you, they worked a very serious code. When we transported to the hospital, our truck was at the hospital for nearly an hour because our staff had to help assist the ER staff. So our truck sat in the parking lot out of service. At that time, we had staffing, but we don't have a truck. This continues to happen daily, like today we had another serious call we were handling. I had plenty of staffing reserve, but I don't have another truck to handle second calls. And it's no fault to nobody, the call volume's increasing, Northern Light staffing, they're doing the best they can to keep their staffing up. But they're running just as many calls in our county and other counties. So they're not available during the day as much as hope to at night, whereas backing them up more than we're supposed to. And nobody can control, control the nine one one calls. My main concern is, like I said, mechanical breakdowns, high mileage. If our truck goes down, like today responding to the call, if our truck got a flat tire, go down, both Northern Light trucks were out of Penobscot County, Dale County, so we had no backup plan. So basically, the town is being like more vulnerable and more vulnerable day after day. Now, I'm not saying every single day of every minute that second truck's needed. But we're just seeing in the last couple of months that a second truck could be huge. We cover a lot of events, we cover football games, we cover the fair, and we just can't run numerous calls. Spacy was on some of the calls and witnessed them. We had multiple calls going on, we had to wait for outside agencies, Greenville had to come assist on one. So I know taxes are high in town, but I really think this is a crucial benefit to us to operate with two trucks. Most EMS services nationwide do not run with just one truck. Like we have to send our truck out in November for a service. I don't know if Northern Light's going to be available for now. I have to have it worked on Wednesday to have some radio work done and some other stuff. And I talked to the dealers today to try to not tear the truck completely apart. We have to go, we have to go. So it's making it really hard to keep this truck in service and out of service. And everybody owns vehicles, so this truck will break. And we're going to be without a truck. Because unfortunately, we can't guarantee that Northern Light or Milo or any other agency is going to be able to help us. And we're going to be in the exact same thing we were when we started this plan. They also, what we do right now with our two lead engines, we rotate them during our shift work, month for month. I'd like to do this if this proposal includes, so one truck isn't constantly getting the high mileage. We run one for one month, you put it in reserve, then the other one for another month, swap and put it in reserve. We have secured some, I shouldn't say small, some large grants. We were able to get a cardiac monitor through the state of Maine. We actually got two of them through. So part of this plan, we were able to reduce it, take a twenty five thousand dollars off that. I did get a phone call today. I can't announce the department right now because I'm still working. But a larger department in the state of Maine has agreed to donate a stretcher system to me, which will potentially save us thirty to forty thousand dollars. So I'm working through those pieces. I just can't say who it is right at the moment. So we are trying to look for other avenues to help reuse money. At the end of the day, the truck, the truck is a demo truck. They ordered four of them, they only have one left. I talked to the dealer today, he was going to hold it for me again. The truck itself is three hundred and fifteen thousand. The stretcher system that needs to go in at was originally ninety seven thousand, but if we can knock that down thirty to forty thousand, that'll take some money off. And then there's some minor stuff, the radios have to be put in it, it's around thirty five thousand to finish putting the supplies on it. The one good thing about a lease purchase, we've been working with the interest bargain bank that do does most of our financing lease purchases. The first payment's not due to August, uh, excuse me, October twenty twenty six. So that would allow us to put the capital payment into the budget cycle. So there's no money upfront, there's no money down. I would like to take sixty thousand out of my fire capital and throw towards this because I'll need it. And if the board's willing to, I can't predict the future, but right now around sixty thousand goes into fire capital every year to build our truck reserves for breakdown. Technically, we can put that, we're going to try to merge these departments together. Alcina and I have been talking, there's one department, there's no sense around multiple budgets, multiple payrolls, multiple capitals. So we may have to increase capital just a little bit. But we think without making a huge dent, we'd be able to use that capital that's reoccurring every year to make this payment on the truck. There are two interest rates, the payments are either going to be fifty three or fifty five thousand dollars a year for a ten year payment. The higher interest rates around six point two five. And they can drop to five point eight nine if we agree to do some banking. I don't know the exact things. They have agreed to go to a fifteen year loan, but the town would have to become a full client of the bank. And that's way above my pay, they can make a decision that. So there are options, like I said, the one good thing is no money needs to be appropriated, no money needs to be down. It is lease purchase, so two years from now, if something god awful happens in the town, can't afford it, EMS service, whatever, it goes back to the bank. At the end of the lease purchase, we purchase the truck like we do, I buy a truck for a dollar. So I will open this up with all kinds of questions, comments, concerns. Throw stuff at me, whatever.
Yeah, I totally appreciate all the work that you're doing, Brian, and what you've brought. And I'm trying to understand what's happening in the background. I'm sure you are, but um is it because we have this new resource and this willingness to staff ambulances here? That Northern Light has said, well, Dover Fox Drive is going to do their own thing, so we're not going to worry about it? Or is it more of what we were encountering before, not enough trained E M P's working for Northern Light?
It's a little bit of everything encompassed. I think the call volume constantly increases. I think still people are still getting out of EMS since COVID. I think no fault to anybody, we have quarterly meetings. And Northern Light's doing everything they can, but their call volumes increased there. I know for a fact some of Northern Light employees work for the last part time. And one of the employees talked to me the other day that they actually got in trouble at the E R because they refused to transfer to Bang Works, they were the only truck for Piscatawba County, and the exact words were thrown in their faces. Well, then Dover Fire and Ambulance, take the transfer. She goes, I'm still not taking the transfer because it still affects the rest of the county. So the reason for us to go primary was number one, was allow them to help handle other emergencies, help do interfacility transfers. But as a whole, everything keeps climbing. If you go to the, you know, beds will fall, nine one one phones don't stop ringing. And I don't know the reason why, I honestly don't. Like I said, they they did a transfer this morning, they had a call open Ripley that they had to go take care of, Dexter was busy. And then our call came in, just it seems like this county's kind of like, well, nothing's going on, nothing's going on. And then when it falls apart, everything falls apart. It just seems like everybody decides to call nine one one at the same time. I don't know why, it's a weird thing. I just think everybody's doing the best they can right now. I just think people are short-staffed and nobody wants to work. And we're doing the best we can, but we're starting to see a real need that. And like I said, I know it's a financial thing for the town, but we're we're going to get caught with our pants down again. And what I don't want is to say, hey, your truck's gone out for a motor repair and they're unavailable. And somebody has cardiac arrest and there's nothing we can do to help them. We didn't know this was going to happen going into this two years ago. We had Plan A and we were given Plan B, like I said. And now we know Plan B is going to grow because they've already told us this is what they expect. So I don't know what next year is going to bring, I don't know what the year after is going to bring. I have a prediction, just a prediction that our town, our fire department will have primary coverage twenty four hours a day at some point, just the way it's going. I don't know when that's going to be, I could be totally wrong, but from day one, it seems everything I've brought to the protection committee and the board seems to be happening. Everything we've been told down the road seems to be happening. I'm not sure how to fix it. I I I wish I wasn't sitting here asking for this right now, but.
Can you speak to the nature of the calls? Are they just the same bump and work?
They're honestly, they're everything from he took a broken finger from the fair that did not need to be taken, that somebody could have had, somebody drive, but you can't refuse if they ask for transport. So it's from a simple broken finger all the way to a cardiac arrest. We had a serious field call today, chest pains, mental wellness we deal with, falls, you name it, we get called for it. A nursing homes, the three nursing homes. Hibbert's is a big call factor, but a lot of our public, a lot of our populations elderly. We have a lot of accidents. We don't have the recreation that some of the other towns have, ours, the snowmobiles and stuff coming through. We've been helping other communities the best we can with trying to keep our town protected. Because other ambulances are transporting but don't have a higher license level and that's needed, so we'll go assist them. We're just trying to do the best we can to help the whole situation without leaving our town vulnerable. And it's hard, we don't want to say no, I have refused two calls in the last three weeks to go out of town. I said I couldn't do it, but I don't want to be that town that was in the paper last year for not helping. But we have to make sure we're protecting our town as well.
Neil?
It doesn't involve our town ambulance service exactly, but several of us went to the MMA convention and spending time with vendors. I was talking to banker that I know we've dealt with about this project. And he said that he is stunned by the number of towns that are coming to them for this lease purchase project because they are trying to add ambulances to their fire departments because they're having this problem throughout the state. So this isn't, it's not just us, but he was commenting on how many towns are coming to them for this pro- this process of being able to lease purchase an ambulance because there are so many towns that are they're struggling to have the coverage that they need for whatever reason they're having that issue. I just thought I'd throw that out, that there are a lot of towns going through the same thing.
Thank you, Jane?
So a couple of questions. So of the other three towns that have bought the demo, do you know what town those are?
I know one was Winthrop. I do not know the other two towns. I talked to Kyle at Autotronics today. They bought four spec vehicles to bring in and he said honestly, he didn't think that they would go this fast. But I think that as a whole, that people are in and wanting EMS. Usually if you, so this is a demo truck, this is not one we set down in the factory and build. Those are anywhere from two to four years out right now. These are ones the companies designed, they put them together, warranties the same. But yeah, three of them were gone just like that, he said. So I asked him if he'd do me a favor and just kind of hold one overnight, just to see what the board's consensus was. But I could, I I don't know. Trying to think if the guy I know still runs, went through B M S, but the brand new factory warranties, the Ford warranties come with them.
Well, again, the reason I ask is it would be helpful for our residents to understand that, yes, it's Winthrop, it might be Mars Hill.
Yeah.
To get that piece of information and that's all.
We went and looked at these trucks probably three months ago and and looked at them in the box and they were all pre-sold. But the same Ford just came in. So we did look at them, they do meet the needs of the town and what what we're looking for and what we need. And we honestly didn't honestly think the price point was going to be that low. I know three hundred and fifteen thousand is not that low, but today's market, we start looking at other things. But I haven't heard any complaints from anybody about Autotronics or these trucks or anything like that.
Um, the other thing is of the hundred and sixty, here it's written as a hundred and sixty five calls. Are they Dover calls or are they all calls?
So those are all calls, a hundred, I would, I can tell you right now. Fifteen, so a hundred and fifty of them are Dover calls.
And that too is a good piece of information to say, you know, we're not going to Womantig, we're not.
Yeah, I refused to call in Bradford and refused to call in Corin. Some of these are out of town called multiple vehicle car accidents with multiple patients. ALS backups to Northern Light, Milo, other agencies that need more help. But most of them, ninety five percent of these runs are in Dover.
And I'll just share that Protection Committee, we've been talking about this issue for months and months. And, you know, we tried as best we could to do our homework in checking with, calling and or getting the best financial, you know, offerings, that sort of thing. So this wasn't sit by the TV and figure out how you're going to spend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
No, and the town seems to have a longstanding working relationship with Andrew Scoggin Bank and their financial people, so.
So. I I just want to reemphasize for anyone that didn't hear, didn't believe in, that we didn't start this process with the intention of being primary. And I can't say that loud enough. We learned a lot in the process of trying to do the right thing and we ended up as primary. And that has added obviously quite a lot to our plate, into their plate, that that wasn't the intention. But if you actually sit back for a second and look at the rest of the country, you're going to notice some trends that rural communities have been struggling, but it's not just rural anymore. Our healthcare system seemingly is falling apart. You can't find enough providers for a primary care practice, a hospital or E D. And then people have been leaving emergency services in groves. So we have a whole backlog of employment that can't fill. We have Maine having statistically the largest amount of geriatrics in the country and we're all spread out. We go from a system that's decentralized historically to centralized, and then that kind of falls apart and we go back to what we're seeing right now. It it does this. Unfortunately, unless we do the right thing, which we're trying to do, which is provide the right resources, you or a loved one may be told on the phone, you call nine one one, there is no help for you. It will be five hours before somebody can come help you. And I'm not trying to scare people, I'm being honest with you right now. We didn't start here saying, oh, we have a whole fleet of ambulances. I guarantee he didn't want that, that was not on the radar when we started this conversation. Because we have to look at a lot of things, including our infrastructure, having enough space for this equipment. There's so many things that we've had to think about. And Fashion Committee has had a number of meetings where we sat there very melancholy, looking at the numbers and going, this is not what we thought this was going to turn into. But we are trying to do the right thing for the community. And our neighboring communities, because we know that if we have the availability and there's a call and someone needs help, we're going to try to help. We also push back when there's time to say, we can't. Unfortunately, everyone knows Northern Light is not good financially, they've been struggling for years and they have to make decisions. So it's not a surprise that they're having a hard time manning their own vehicles, they're dealing with the same things. So if anyone has questions or concerns or complaints, come see us on Protection Committee because we've been discussing it for a year and a half at this point. Or email us, we're happy to talk with you. But we understand taxes are high and we are doing everything we can to make any decision we make less painful as possible.
Also, the in terms of having the backup truck and let's put aside that the the ability that that gives us to to do more calls at the same amount of time, because as you said, the truck is stuck at Mayo for an hour. This allows us to take the other truck out. But aside from that, as Brian mentioned, the the risk that we have of having the truck have a simple mechanical failure at an inopportune time, any truck is not going to show itself as a failure when it's sitting in the garage. It's only going to happen once we start it up and try moving it. A number of years ago, we had the same issue come up with our Grader, something that is an important piece of equipment for the town. And with the limited amount of slightly different circumstance, but we have only a limited amount of time, daylight hours. Daylight hours that we can use to do the work that the grader needs to do. And if it's out for a week, two weeks, sure, nobody's going to die. But that's a road that's not getting maintained. Um, culvert is not getting fixed, something. And we made a decision to have a backup because we couldn't just, you know, run down to the, the grader's R S and grab one for the afternoon. And because EMS is dealing with literal, literally like. Life and death situations. It, it, it's terrible that everything costs as much as it does, but. What, that's what it costs and the. The price to put on health and safety of our community. Uh, and in addition, what Joel is saying about. Being assured that we have trucks and our neighboring communities. Northern Lights resources can then be used. To spread out instead of just favoring. One town over another and that, that helps us all, especially because we can get it enacted in anywhere. I mean, and that's the other thing to think about. Um, so, uh.
And I don't think they want to operate like that. They just have no choice. They just don't have the people.
It's all triaging. I mean, if you, if you've got a certain call volume and you've only, I mean, this is why you're coming before us. There's a certain call volume that needs to be satisfied. And if you don't have the equipment or the people, then it won't get satisfied. It's as simple as that. It's, as you said, you cannot convince people to not call nine one one when they're having a heart attack. I mean. Should go without saying, but that's exactly true. So.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, so Brian, I just, my, I have a bit of a question about the. Four months ago, six months ago, we were deep in conversation, negotiation. With Northern Light and the state, we certifications, regulations. The state was involved on, you know, coverage and, and making sure that, you know, everybody was going to have coverage and. Wasn't just one ambulance coming in and, you know, the whole plan was looked at. Has that all just gone out the window? And then my second point to that is as of two weeks ago, Northern Light has a new CEO. Just wondering if his focus may change more towards EMS and, and more money. Et cetera. And all this comes to, hey, this wasn't in the budget conversation. And I hear all of you, Joel and Jane, and you, Brian.
Um, so the feasibility study has not changed. No. I think once, like I said, once the whole feasibility study report of all area, call coverage, call volume. Um, that was submitted to main EMS and the board of directors at Northern Light. After that was reviewed, um. I'm not sure. I. I know why they probably did what they did, but that's why they asked us to take primary coverage after looking at the response times from our department. Their response times from their agencies and the amount of numbers we were doing. And basically what the contract says, Emery, is during the day, Northern Light will back us up if they're, if they can and if they're available. And at night, Dover Fire backs them up if we can, if we're available and. And they cover such a widespread area, um, and with their inner facility transfers. I'm not going to say it's really a one-way street. We, we have a better chance of covering them at night than they do having to cover us during the day. Cause their higher call volumes come at day, so it's pulling all their trucks to the Penobscot area or they have a transfer going on. Or they have a multi-car accident in the Corin area that pulls all their trucks. And if they're out at night, we, we only cover Dover per se for EMS. Um, we do, we'll go out of town in an emergency situation, but I think that's what's going on is their call volume steadily increasing. So it pulls them and they're just not available to back us up. And there's, there's, they went out twice last night, just in the town of Dover without us. They were available at night. So there are times that they are available and we're not, not requested, but. As a whole, everything's getting busier and I don't want to really look at the run number aspect. I want to look at the, the maintenance issue and the breakdown issue and the fact if something does happen. Crucially, we don't have a backup plan. Um, and, and that's the main concern, you know, like today, that, that patient that was critical. That had to go to the ER, we would have broke down two or from, um, she would have been, I'm not sure what would have taken place. Cause there were no ambulances around to help her. Um, so really that's why I'm here, um. Asking for this barn to make sure we have a backup plan for our citizens as a whole. That makes sense?
Uh, yes, if I'm still here, it does.
And far as the CEO, I, I don't know. Hopefully L C N R and I will be able to sit down with them, but. He has staff underneath him that meet with us quarterly and they're trying everything in their power to, um. Re- retrain staffing and bring more staffing in, but at the end of the day, if nobody wants to go to work, nobody's going to want to work, no matter who. Who runs the show. Um, but I'd like to know what his standpoint is on rebuilding if, if that's a possibility.
Thank you, Emory.
I just think another thing to look at is even beyond having the backup. Um, by adding a second truck, you're essentially reducing the mileage put on the first truck as well. So you're extending the life of the first truck too. Um, like you said, you probably alternate months when it, obviously sometimes bolt her out, but.
Yeah.
You'd, you'd alternate the, the primary.
Yeah. So basically the month of January, Truck A runs and then it goes into reserve, the month of February, Truck B. And we do that right now with our lead engines. They rotate month to month and it does save on maintenance costs. It does save on fuel, tires, wear and tear. Um, so it is helpful and, um, hopefully we can get extended life out of these trucks than what they normally are expected, so.
Yeah, um. One easy question, I think, is, and this is true for my edification is. If I call nine one one tonight because I fall downstairs or something, what happens with dispatch? Do they?
So we have a CAD-based response plan system that we go in and create. Um, so it depends on your call. So if you call and say, I'm nauseous, I'm not feeling well, I think I may have the flu. And the CAD. No, but you'd be, you'd be surprised. So different levels of calls trigger different levels of response. So you'll see that during the day, different levels, you only might see the ambulance go out, but if you see the fire truck, well, that's a higher priority call. Um, so at night's the same way and in the computer, the dispatchers will look at it and if it's a, what we call a medical caller, general weakness. If Northern Light's available, they get paged, they come and take care of it and we may come over if they need an extra set of hands lifting, but. If you call and say, you're not going to say I'm, well, you might say I'm having a stroke, stroke, convulsions, heart attack, overdose, unresponsive. There's certain levels of response that will trigger and I'll say dispatch Dover Fire and Rescue with them just because. Additional set of hands are usually needed. Sometimes we may drive for them. Sometimes we may get there before them. We may have a higher license level than them that will jump on their truck and help. So it all depends on the level of the call. And they'll still, if they're available, they're supposed to go with us during the daytime for cardiac arrest to give us another set of hands. So it all depends on, on what comes in for a call and what the level is. And it's, it's not a perfect system, but it works pretty good.
My other thought is just, um, you know, last year when we were working on the budget, we had citizens. Here at a town meeting saying, what are we doing? Why are we buying any? You know, and so I think it's one thing for. You who do this every day in the protection committee to be totally, um, invested and involved. And understanding the dynamics of it all. And somehow we've really got to make sure that the taxpayers. Really get it, um.
Yeah, I understand that after and I think, I don't talk to everybody in town, but I've been hearing some good things. A lot of our people have been hearing some good things since we've got. thrown this task. Um, I feel like our PR is kind of better people understanding what we're here for, what we're doing. We've helped a lot of families being transported. Again, it comes, it comes at a cost, but. I think it was a big shock because everybody was so used to the hospital away system. They were always here. Um, like I said, our, our people helped work there cardiac arrest with them in their own ER because they didn't have enough staff one night. Um, I think just things are changing as a whole and, and I hope. I wouldn't be here, trust me. If we could just focus on fire calls, I would. We've lost some good people because nobody wants to work in any ambulance, but I've gained some great people because people want to work in some ambulances. I've actually got a call from another Bangalore firefighter that wants to come work for him because he said great things about us and our program and how the town's doing. So there's, there's pros and cons with everything you do. You're still going to get your negative people that. Yes, it does cost money, but on this side, we're offering our service that benefit our taxpayers that. When you call, we're here to help, you know what I mean? Instead of standing in your kitchen with our arms crossed, not being able to do anything because we can't get you. We might be looking across the street at the hospital, but I can't get you there. But now we have that opportunity and. And hopefully with the second truck, if the board approves the lease purchase, we'll be able to secure that a little bit better if one goes down or. Jane and you are both having an emergency at the same time, you know, and I'm not going to sit here and say that every second call that I will have the staff in. For that second truck, but ninety to ninety-five percent of the time, I have enough crew to handle two calls at once.
Yeah, I don't doubt this at all. I just want to make sure we're, we're all talking with our neighbors and. And people when they see this in the paper or online or. On Facebook or wherever they, they are reading and responding. Uh, we're doing our best to make sure people understand what the need is and.
And I want everybody to know and people that are listening at home order that we're there seven days a week. I tell everybody I see. Come down, come sit at the table, let's talk to us, we'll show you the ambulance, show you your truck, show what you're helping your kids, your family. We're always having open door policy. I want people to know what we're providing and what we're doing for them. So they're, they're welcome to stop by anytime.
Thank you. Any, any more questions? Emory's got his hands up. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Brian, two questions if I may. Just going back to state regulations and the state again. The state offers no regulations on coverage by, you know, the, the. That there has to be a certain amount of coverage by different departments, different, different companies, different anything. They just wash their hands of it. They don't, there's no, no magic number that your population gets this much, et cetera.
No, it, it does when it comes to funding and grants, um, because trust me, I asked the state and I argued with them when we went through this. Um, when we were struggling. So how it works, Emory, if you, if you put a town down on your request for your license request. So on Dover Fire's license for our ambulance, it has the town of Dover and Atkinson. So when a call comes in and if we're available, we have to respond. We cannot refuse it. So state Northern Light, I believe they have somewhere around twenty-seven towns listed. So they are obligated to respond if they have resources available. If you don't have resources available, say your trucks are out or your staffing are broke. They have to have, uh, mutually aid agreements and stuff with other ambulance services, but as a whole, I don't believe in L C N A can correct me. That there's an actual law that says that if you don't respond to this town, you're going to be in trouble.
Uh, and my other question is, uh, financial, uh, cost benefit analysis. Are we getting paid every time you go out? Is there, do, do we get a, uh? Do we send out an invoice? Does the insurance pay us?
Yeah, so we have a billing company out of Southern Maine. That we have to report into a state database of what they call a demographic sheet from the hospital, patient information, people, insurance. We have to submit run reports to the state that get reviewed. And then our billing company has access to this reporting system. They go on and review each run and they'll say billable and non-billable. So on billable calls, they'll work with insurance companies, Medicaid, main care, um. To get the town reimbursed and it's about a thirty percent reimbursement. And when we go back up, um, other towns or Northern Light. Uh, it's a flat fee of four hundred dollars, what they call an advanced life support charge. And I'm actually working with Lifelight in Maine. I just, that, I don't know if you saw the contract, but yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, we did assist Lifelight, but we don't have a contract with them, so they'll pay us back as well. Um, at the end of the day, it is about a thirty percent. We're starting to see, um, invoices come in, bills come in, deposits come in. Um, it takes a while to get going, so we have to have main care, Medicaid inspections to prove that we're in actual service. So once we start having stuff roll in, Emory, it's a constant. Um, no, it will not replace what we're spending by any means. Um. But we are getting paid. Unfortunately, we won't get paid what they call patient sign-offs. So if we come to your house and you, even though you have health insurance and having chest pains and then you decide, well, I don't want to go buy ambulance. My wife's going to drive me out. We sign you off and that's an unbillable call for us. That sometimes does happen and there's nothing we can do about that. Um, but for the most part, um, like I said, it's about a thirty percent reimbursement rate.
Thirty percent?
Yeah, roughly time. Great, let's go. Now, there is something that I brought and I, I'll just bring it up to you guys right now. Um. We have gone and helped other communities and other stuff and, uh, there have been patient sign-offs, so we don't get anything. I would like to move forward with the protection committee and L C N A to draft up a contract to send to other communities. Um, this is being done in the Milo area right now. It says, we'll come to Guilford and help you if we're available. And have the resources, but if it's a patient sign-off, that the town of Guilford will pay this flat rate back to the town of Dover. If we bill two thousand dollars and we only get seven hundred dollars out of insurance, the town of Guilford will pick up the remainder balance. Um, I know the town of Howland's doing that in the Milo area when they're protecting them because they're not coming down here for free either. So that's something I would like to look into and draft something, send to the communities and say. We're willing to help if we're available, but it's going to come. We can't, our tax carriers can't fix everybody else's problems, so. We go to Sangamo, like you said, and you decide I don't want to go to the hospital and you have no insurance. Well, unfortunately in the town of Sangamo, we'll have to pay the town of Dover this flat rate to reimburse us for a few hours mileage and our time. Um, and that will be up to these communities, but I think that's only fair.
Yep.
Um, so Brian, just the last bit of that, and I know, I know you just answered it, but it was the. In the last six months, and I know you're just getting the feel of it, but the getting paid bit is happening. You're getting checks back in from calls that you've been making over the last four or six months or whatever. The system is starting to work.
It is starting to work and our, my, uh, I guess my billing agent, Lori out of Southern Maine, I talked to and they said it. It takes a long time to get the stuff once it starts going. Um, we've got multiple deposits. We've got multiple checks paid to us. Um, they're working on another program. I believe L C N is familiar with it. It gets us paid a little bit higher in percentage, but that takes us time. All this is work, but we are starting to see, um, reimbursements and revenues start coming in.
And I know you're saying you're using an, a, uh, billing agency, but do you have? The administration to get the paperwork to them? Not you personally, does the EMS have the ability to, not you guys. Have the ability to get the charges, the billing towards, to the billing agency correctly?
Yes, everything's recorded electronically. We have roughly supposed to be within twenty-four hours. Our run report is supposed to be submitted into our online reporting, uh, for the state. And like our doctors will review them and stuff. They have access to that. So they go in daily. And look at our runs and if they say they're ready to be billed, they pull all the information out of it. There's. And there's different levels of care. They get different bills, different rates. So this is all set up being done on a regular basis. Right now we have a. Gentleman that reviews our run sheets to make sure everything's in order, so they are ready to be billed. So we do have a system in place that seems to be working quite nicely.
Thank you.
Hey, L C N A, did you have something else to add?
Yeah, I was just going to step on the billing aspect. Uh, right now we are, as Brian was saying, it's going to take a couple of months for us. To get these payments in and what's going to be really beneficial is the fact that. We are going to be in network with a lot of insurance providers, including VA, so that the higher chances are we are going to get those reimbursements. Um, because currently some of them, the applications are in, but we're still out of network. Um, and hopefully, once we are in network, those folks with different, say, ATNA, Pilgrim, you know. I mean, obviously Blue Car, Special Shield, um, uh, major carriers will be in network, so we'll have a greater chance on getting that reimbursement.
Excellent. Okay. All good? So, looking for a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of a second ambulance for EMS department.
Second.
As outlined.
Second, hey, any further questions or discussion? Right, all in favor? Very much, you have yourself another ambulance.
I don't, if it's a double Fox truck, I will, thank you for your support and I'll work with Elsina and Johnson go and. Yeah, it probably won't be, I would, I would not expect it to be in service till roughly the first of the year, there's a lot of stuff to still do. Thank you for your continuing support, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you for all the work that you've been doing on this, uh, we know that it's, it wasn't ten minutes of sitting down and thinking this up.
Thank my wife, she's never home.
Thank you again, Brian.
You guys mind if I run home?
No, you.
Yes, please stand.
Yeah. All right. On the next one, we have, we've already covered, but we'll go back into the state of Maine, two thousand twenty-six proposed state valuation.
Yeah, we'll accept the twenty twenty-six proposed state of value, evaluate for not be that.
Second from Jane, uh, any further discussion about this? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. All right. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year, second quarter wastewater bills.
I said twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year, second quarter wastewater bill.
Tracy with a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right. Pointment of ordinance committee members. Who are two abstaining from this, but do we have a motion?
We'll accept the members of the ordinance committee.
Any second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Good question.
Yep.
There are six on this committee, is that what I'm counting? Okay.
Yeah, six for now, um, it can be greater, but that's what we've got for number, yeah, yeah, get started with that. We felt that six was enough to get started at least, but just.
And and an even number like that, I mean.
Yeah.
You know how, what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
We talked at admin committee about, you know, having between seven and nine.
Yeah, and we're doing this, but yeah, we don't have the code of ethics done yet. Which would kind of be important to get done.
Yeah, we're gonna retroactively ask everybody to sign it after, when it, when it's all ready.
Is there gonna be a built-in social media clause in that as well, or are you gonna build a completely separate one?
We, we have. Mention of social media and the standards in the ethics clause. We didn't want to have the ethics clause become the, the ethic, code of ethics, become a, like an expansive. Nitty gritty discussion about, about any one particular issue, but certainly if. Feel that there needs to be more than just the, what we've got in there, then, yeah, we could have a separate one, a rider that would.
Right, I just noticed a lot of other municipalities have actually done that, they split social media off because it's such a. Involved topic nowadays.
Yeah, and that's, that is probably a good idea, we'll get this in place and then that could supersede. Uh, as a matter of fact, it's a good suggestion, just um, to admin committee, we could just insert. A hook for that in, even though we don't have it yet, but we improve it, then we don't have to re-approve it to put in a hook, so. Okay, uh, all in favor, those who are voting? Yeah, okay.
I'm going back to this abstaining.
Yes.
We are abstaining and Kevin is abstaining, yes. And Emery was too, right?
Yeah, Emery's, Emery's on affirmative.
We had a lot of sense, I think we should have. He could buy a hard vote.
All right, cool, all right, now on to town managers' report.
All right, so first on the list is the Lincoln Street Bridge. Haven't spent a, I mean, that's already, um, so currently. Looking at uh, additional funding opportunities, we have secured, I think it's the one point two million from professional directed spending. The design phase of this project is complete, um, that is closed out with MIMA. And now we're moving on to basically what we need as construction funds. The. Price for this project doubled of what was asked for, um, and that has a lot of different factors that have. Come into play since the original ask, um, so we're looking at. I'm hoping this stays, it is about one point five million is what our gap is at the moment in order to get this funded and project completed. Um, we do have a timeline on these funds, we, it needs to be expended and completed by twenty twenty-seven. Um, that's the closeout of that grant, so it needs to be done.
Does it need to be complete or at least?
Like committed and.
Committed, right, yeah, yeah, it doesn't have to be.
Yes, but yeah, the.
Line painted and all.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. But that's basically the gist on that one, so I'm looking at funding opportunities for that in various areas. Today, I was at the ribbon cutting ceremony for the Eastern Area Agency of Aging at Central Hall, it was very. It was very nice hearing um, that services are back in the area. Uh, people were having a travel to Brewer and that was quite a gap for folks, um, for a lot of people that don't know. They provide, um, some of the services they provide, obviously, is the wheel, meals on wheels for homebound residents, and that's not only through Dover Foxcroft, but the. This scattered this region also, now Scott area. Uh, they have walk-in, they will be having walk-in resource support every Wednesday there. There's gonna be wellness and educational classes, both in person and virtually, uh, Medicare counseling. Caregiver Support Group and various workshops to serve older adults throughout our region. Um, this access center is what they're calling it, is a. Third to Brewer and Callis with additional expansion, looking at Ellsworth and then also another. Um, facility somewhere in Northern South Scott, they have a place, yeah. So also again, reiterating a special thank you to Tammy and Tara for collaborating with Eastern Area Aging. Uh, to bring these resources back to Dover Foxcroft and also the county, definitely a, a big, a big need.
Yeah, we're not in a time where we're hearing about it.
No, so it was very nice, it was very nice to hear that, and they, as they were listening at.
So where's it located in Central Hall?
So it's uh, bottom level, yeah, yes.
Bottom level, the, the meeting space in the middle or out in the back?
So, um, so depending on how you walk in, but uh, where there was artwork hung up in, or they had like a gallery space in there.
From River Street or Main Street, let's be.
Either way, I mean, it's, it's gonna be in the levels.
Okay, I know.
There was like a game room.
Yep.
And it also had artwork, uh, kind of like gallery feature there, so there, there, um, there's an area in there that has refrigerators, areas for meal prep, and then they've also. Have a section literally across the hall in this um, closed in section. And I believe there's another room they're gonna be utilizing, they're also getting a walk-in, they were hoping to have it there. Uh, today to show everybody, but they're gonna have a walk-in, um, freezer space so that they be able to. Refrigerator slash freezer, I believe it is, cooler, um, so that they can hold more food and um. Basically provide more, more deliveries and, and meal prep and whatnot, um, trying to think. I don't specifically know where the actual office office per se is, but it's all on that main level, it's all right there. And then, um, are there any other questions on that one? Then as far as our landfill road projects and Bear Hill for Ravi's paving. So yesterday I saw snowflakes and I got scared. And uh, unfortunately, due to the scheduling constraints, Roundy was unable to meet their mobilization and completion timeframe. Um, with our paving contract, but they are gonna be holding all the pricing to continue on. Um, in the meantime, I've been talking with our, the engineering firm that's put out the bid for us and has been working with him. To have them at least come do the excavation work before the ground freezes and later. Um, and then it also gives time for the ground to settle and compact, and then all they need to do is come and do some surface prep and then just pave. June, whatever month season is done and, and good and ready for that, so.
So next year, we're gonna be put on the October schedule?
What's that?
So next year, are we going to be put on the October schedule? Or are we first priority?
Well, depending on, it's going to, the bids are gonna go out earlier than last year, because last year, the bids went out in July. And so it all depends on who, who bids for what for next year's paving.
So I guess it means nothing if the price will remain the same unless we go with this company. Right?
Well, we're still going, we, we have a signed contract with them and they're gonna keep this price.
You're not explaining my point.
Yeah, she, she's saying, are we, we're gonna use them again because we've already agreed to. When are they gonna pop us in, we should be the first client because they didn't meet the deadline.
Right, well, we're not, like, we're not resigning any contract, this is the contract still.
It sounds, it sounds like we're first up, that's, that's the question.
That's my question.
Yeah, that's, that's why I said, right after month season, they're gonna be paving, they're gonna be doing the excavate, if they, yes, they, they are.
And it says scheduling constraint, is that on their end, they couldn't get this done?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have a clause, a penalty for them not doing, not doing the job they paid them for, because I've never heard of a municipality saying, oh, it's cool, you didn't come help us out, like, we were gonna pay you too. It's nice, it's nice they want to keep the same pricing, I tell you right now, there needs to be discussion about a penalty. Because I don't know any business that wouldn't have that as a clause. I mean, they were all good to show up, I'm sure something came up, but here we are, we needed this done and somehow it didn't happen.
Yeah, and the contract clause is basically, um, that they do keep the same pricing upheld. And that's something that going forward, I could have the engineering firm go. Put some other type of language in it, um, it is unfortunate because. You know, we did have two other bidders, um, both were slightly higher. And I think they possibly could have gotten to this a lot earlier, but we were. Promised that this was going to be, also another thing going forward, everybody that is going to be doing work for us is gonna have an evaluation, so if. They do not get a good score, they do not get a job later or another bid up, opportunity and a future project.
Yeah.
Depending on their work and.
Yeah.
Because we've never had an evaluation process, I don't believe, of previous.
Yeah, we've had past performance.
Correct.
Yeah, see you next year, to me, that's a, we don't need your business.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then uh, early voting ends this Thursday, so if you intend on early voting, please come in. Uh, that Thursday's four thirty, right, for closing, yeah. And if you have an absentee ballot, please return it by elec, on election day, um, eight P M. Um, for that to be accepted. That's all I have.
All right, so we're at that stage now where we are. Looking for last open session, see if anybody has any last comments, that includes everybody on the board.
And Stuart, um, I just, are you guys maybe sick of that social media, but I went to dump the other day and I had to bring four pallets. And it was fifteen dollars, I thought that was a little extreme, so I was throwing that out there, like, people are complaining online and I have, I just had a shop and I didn't have cash. And they don't take cards, but I had to go back and get cash and then go back, and so it was kind of an absolute pain.
Yep.
To do it, and it was a lot of money, so. I made it work and I made it happen, but like, that's just my feedback and what I've seen.
Yep, that's, and it is consistent with a lot of the other feedback we heard, so we are, we are in process of trying to smooth out. The, the rough edges and also coming up with a uh, more detailed fee structure. Anybody else from the board have anything?
Yeah.
Oh, Emery, yes, sir.
Um, just so, just so you guys know, the traffic light situation on them.
Yep.
Um, we've been having a lot of issues for some reason, particularly the traffic light at East Main, West Main, Road Street. Seems to be bumping to flash on its own.
Yeah.
Uh, on a first name basis with the, in Barker for AD Electric at this point. Uh, they are still trying to figure out, they don't know if it's water getting into the light somewhere or some kind of power bump somewhere that's causing it. We're still working on it.
Yeah.
I, they don't know exactly what the issue is, but we've kind of got a plan in place to get them more information when it happens. The good news is, is through this process, the left-hand turn arrow from West Main to North Street that. They've been telling us for years, it hasn't been an issue, they've discovered what the issue is, why it sticks. So hopefully they'll be fixing that road. But just so you know, we're getting to a point where sometimes we go in to reset that, which is all we can do. We reset that lane, it's not resetting, um, so and then we can come back three hours later, hit the button to reset it and it will reset. Uh, so there's some kind of obvious power glitch going on, particularly with that light, we've seen it a couple of times at the. The South Street, East Main intersection, but it's primarily been that one right in the uh, right in the square.
Okay.
That we've been having issues with.
Well, Lisa's good news about the left-hand.
Yeah. A, a suggestion for potential Facebook post. Can we re-educate people as to what a yellow blinking light means?
Yeah.
It's like, you know, go, go. I appreciate caution, but when you're sitting there for five minutes, watching cars go back. So, a nice little friendly post of this is what a red, uh, blinking yellow means.
It would almost be better if they just went to all red and then you just treat it like a stop sign, but we don't have that control, so. But I just wanted to make you aware that we know what's going on, AD Electric knows what's going on, but nobody seems to know why at this particular point.
Okay.
And just to piggy up back off the lights, because you just reminded me, thank you, uh, the motherboards for. The school signs on, at MA have come in, tomorrow I'm going out with Public Works. Because they're gonna do the heavy lifting and I'm gonna do the computer stuff. And um, hopefully, because they're all under warranty and of course we got defective ones out right out the back, back. Um, Maine DOT is aware of it, the situation, um, so hopefully by tomorrow, they'll be functioning, believe, and operate for flashing lights.
Excellent.
And then Emery online and then there's a, I think a member of public.
Okay, Emery first?
Yep, am I in?
Yep, you're in.
Uh, so probably a question for Elsina, uh, winter soon approaching. Uh, making sure all our plows are in working order, our trucks are all ready, salt layer spreaders are good. Sidewalk plows, not to mention our gravel roads, are they in as good a shape as they can be headed for winter? And thinking about mud season?
Yeah, why did you say mud season? Um, yeah, so sand and salt's already been put up, Public Works has been working on uh, minor repairs on the equipment. To get that all ready because. I saw snow yesterday. Um, and what was the last, I'm trying to remember, oh, gravel roads. They were out grading in between the rain to hopefully not make it muddy, um, they, they did gravel, or they graded a couple of roads, I'm trying to remember, Norton Hill. Don't remember the few other ones, but there were, there were a handful that were graded. Does that answer? They're good all.
Um, yep, as long as we're on schedule and um. Yeah, on our schedule for being ready.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emery, feel better?
Take care.
Right, the member of the public?
Hello, this is uh, Matt Snow from seven sixty-five East Over Road. I know Brian had to step out, does anyone know the background on the thirty percent reimbursement for? Ambulance services, is that state driven or is that an agreed upon thing?
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it sounds like it was a standard, I, it sounds like that's just the standard going rate. Yeah, it wouldn't be, it sounds like it was a standard. I, it sounds like that's just the standard going rate.
I can follow up. I can follow up for Brian.
Yeah, and I was going to say, I don't, I'm, I want to say also depending on um depending also on the insurance carrier and who's in network and and whatnot, that also might affect that thirty percent. Um, we might actually be possibly potentially getting more back on that when we do accept a lot of the more, um, or will be in network rather.
Yeah, we first, potentially we first started asking about the billing and reimbursements. We were told the average seemed to be about thirty percent. But that really depends on the whole situation, like you said. Um, I'm hoping it's more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, there's nothing else? Looking for that motion we all love? We have one, we have a second. All in favor?
Public Works Committee, they'll turn off our lights.